Well, that's a study session, so we won't make any rash decisions, anyway. All right, since everyone's here, we'll convene the Board of Education. Open session meeting. Study session at five o'clock. Doctor Throsian?
Yes, I will get us started.
Gonna take this away.
Yes, yes. So, uh, what we've tried to do is provide an overview of some of our, um, more immediate needs in both facilities and technology. Uh, we'll start with facilities, we had done that, uh, facilities needs assessment up, uh, and were provided with a hundred million dollar price tag. That was whittled down to a mere thirty million dollars, yet another, uh, pri- uh, number that is inaccessible to us. And so with the funds that we do have, we'd like to maximize, uh, the work that we can get done that's listed in that needs assessment. And so we've been, uh, carefully looking through and identified some of our most urgent needs a- as well as identifying some alternate sources of funding that we may be able to use. And so with that, um, I'll pass it over to Fernando.
Good evening, uh, so yes, uh, and one of the main purpose of this assessment is for us to move i- i- in a direction where we're gonna be going into a preventive maintenance mode rather than reactive like we have, uh, for many years. Uh, we have to start somewhere. We really have to start somewhere, and this is what we have identified as the most, um, immediate needs. Um, if you, if you look at this chart at the bottom, yeah, there are key, uh, colors there, blue is completed, uh, priority one, green is in progress, and so on and so forth. Uh, so we'll start with asphalt. Asphalt being one of the, uh, items that we identify as being of most urgent needs, um, in terms of safety also, and needed maintenance. So, as you can see there, it's pretty much self-explanatory there. Um, Kinder area has been scheduled for Brad Oaks, and that schedule will start for the, uh, on the Thanksgiving, uh, week as well. There it is.
Right. The, the things that you've completed already since the your last presentation to the board.
Yes, the last presentation was, um, basically the, the summer projects that were completed. Uh, these are, these have been, um, completed as well. So, facility short-term projects, kindergarten, developers' fee, we identify what funds we're using as well. Um, Brad Oaks kindergarten classroom floor replacement, that was completed. Mayflower kindergarten classroom wall, remove it. Carpet repaired and some paint that was done there, that was completed as well, that was part of developers' fee. H-back energy management system upgrade, uh, that was completed for, uh, the, the following schools, C E L C, Clifton, District Office, Mayflower, Plymouth, Santa Fe, and, and MHS is in progress. Asphalt lighting added at MHS as a matter of fact, that was completed as of today. Roof repairs, uh, Monroe and Old School, that was done, at a good minimum price, and that was based on the assessment that was done, um, through the facilities master plan. Of course, we can recover that whole cost, but we identify the, that as that, that would be one of the worst ones. C E L C.
Go ahead.
C E L C, Silk Road Asphalt, and we placed that in player, that was completed.
Yes, so since the outdoor lighting was added, has anybody gone over there after dark and walked the path from parking lots to the football field, parking lots to the gym, parking lots to the, to the outdoor?
Since that was completed, I saw today, that's the next step.
Okay, somebody needs to go walk that, because there's some really dark, dark places between parking lots and the events that are happening, which, hopefully that took care of most of that, but.
That's gonna take care of it, but if the light bulbs are not replaced, that won't do anything.
Yeah, just so somebody goes to watch after it's done to make sure of that, got it?
Absolutely, um, to add, to add on that, uh, I'll be doing a walk with, uh, contractors, some sort of a punch list as well, so.
Before we go to the next slide, um, one, thanks for putting us on the big paper so we can actually see it. Uh, and the other, the color coding makes this very easy to quickly identify that you are targeting just a couple of things to get us up to snuff, since we know we don't have enough to do every month once. But, the items we have listed up here as completed aren't necessarily being reflected on the sheet, and we're just starting at the bottom where it says roof repair. For the adult school, and I look on the bottom here where it says roof, and there's no indication that we completed it.
It, we wasn't captured, and that was, that was our mistake, my mistake.
Right, so.
We'll, we'll update this just so, to make sure that our notes are.
Yeah, because this is, I mean, this is fantastic that we were able to get these things done, um, but they're not being reflected on the sheet already, that, that it's been completed. At least the Mayflower portion isn't, of the floors and paint, so I've looked at Mayflower under paint, and we've seen from there where it wasn't the same, so, or, or the carpet as well. Talking about classrooms, and here we're talking about tables. So, if you can please get this rid of it.
Yeah, we'll, we'll update it.
For sure, for sure.
And when we talk about painting, if we're talking Mayflower syrup, it's just a, a classroom.
But the, but the work that has been done is not all here, so let's move on to the next one. We'll, we'll update it, yeah.
Okay, perfect.
So, these are the facilities' plan, uh, short-term project. We have asphalt, Brad Oaks, inner area stated, uh, that's the, uh, the cost. Uh, I, we added this major to be, uh, to be out there, that's also developers' fee. MHS chloro driveway, it's been on, on that list for a while, um, it's scheduled for November six since, uh, M O T yard, as the board approved that project, it's also been scheduled for, uh, November three. H-back, uh, replace EMF system with President Brad Oaks, Guyan, Guyanogs, Monroe, Wildrose. I believe that should capture most, if not all, of the, our sites. Uh, fence repair, fans along Clifton Field, that's, uh, that's about to be scheduled as well.
So, the Pelican, can you refresh our memory on what the Pelican EMS system is?
Uh, so it's basically an upgraded system that, that it's been put in place where you can, uh, pull up your, your cell phone, your, your smartphone and control or schedule the lighting from wherever you're at.
So, it's an energy management system, in other words?
Yes, yes. It also, uh, captures costs of usage, so that's, that's an upgrade, that, that, uh, doing all of that.
Any questions on that? These are the, uh, the, also facilities, uh, many short-term projects, asphalt, Clifton, um, basketball area, onset between a main building, um, Plymouth, Wildrose, um, H-back, district office server, rooms explored for project equipment, update approximately thirty-five thousand dollars. Uh, we're still looking to, uh.
Make costs.
Yes, additional costs.
We are looking for also for those quarter end, unless, unless we find out when you are, are seeing the board report.
Uh, so we have a bleacher replacement on MHS baseball and softball, approximately cost forty-eight thousand dollars.
Are those gonna be portable, or are they gonna have to have D H S, uh, I mean?
What is it?
For the, for the bleachers.
Yeah, for, uh, D S A approval. Are they fixed and require D S A approval, or are they portable?
I'll find out.
Wouldn't it be better to get portable ones to like?
I don't, maybe, yeah, I don't know, I, maybe, depends on the cost, uh.
Yeah, I, I, uh, my recommendation is to get portable ones, they're sturdy, they don't need.
Enough to move, right?
Right.
For homecoming or whatever.
If.
Isn't that what we have for, for, for the, the wall?
The ones at the baseball field are fixed.
I don't think so.
They're fixed.
Oh.
They're behind the home plate, those are, those are fixed, yeah.
The ones on the side are portable, those are portable. The ones behind the plate is fixed.
If it's a fixed one.
You have to get D S A approval, and then you have to do that whole thing, the whole check.
And if it's fixed, and it's, maybe it's worth looking at replacement, uh, not replacement, excuse me, replacement. All right, I, I, we'll look at every option because we'll get the most comprehensive.
Can we make sure that the bleachers and so forth again are put on, on here? Put them there, play around, I guess, to find a little better spot. I just wanna make sure that everything that we're listing here, we might have done on Sunday, because it was not.
So, we have acquired, my space. It's your final schools, uh, calculated approximately a hundred fifty thousand dollars per student. That's the average cost.
So now that's all the recommended projects for this coming year?
Two years.
Next two years?
Something I don't see that we had a lot of discussion on is the baseball field.
The only thing that wasn't done, as I recall, was the problem with the drainage, yeah, the dugout.
You know, we should add the drainage, we don't have a solution for that, and, and we still don't have a solution for that, but we should add that.
We should spend a lot of money without a solution to the water.
Right, right.
Because I think we just exacerbate and waste our money.
Yeah, we, we will add that, we've brought out a few different people to come in, give us a quote, a recommendation, and people simply walked away saying, it's the grading of your entire field, um, if I can't do this job. So, we'll keep, we will continue to, yeah, we don't have a solution, otherwise it would have been solved by now. But, uh, we will add that to that list and, um, continue that work. Now, and I also wanna correct, um, we don't, we don't have enough to do the exterior paint of all of our schools, given your future. And so, uh, we'll, what we recommend is to start with those that are, and then the oldest, and new figures repair, and, uh, they're, uh, help us, I suppose.
Because, I mean, do the complete school, you pick and do the complete school.
The extra, the exterior, yeah.
E, when we're talking about painting the schools, were we talking about hiring outside contractors to paint, or in-house people going as part of their normal painting, and hiring more stuff?
You know, it's interesting, is we, we were actually wondering the same thing, um, we're, uh, wondering if we could do both. So, we have one painter, so we're not gonna get it done with the one painter, uh.
There are projects you're gonna have to hire out.
And so we'll likely hire out, but we're wondering if we could figure out something to do in-house over a longer period of time, but that's something we should, uh, most likely it would be, uh, hire out.
Well, one thing we may want to, Edak may want to look at, is a lot of our problems with the different sites is the face of awards get, um, they start placing much sooner than the rest of the walls, so our painter bank would be able to do face of awards.
Right, and then.
I'll take it too.
Right, when, uh, we, we, uh, get quotes, when we walk with our contractors, that is part of the job where they replace, uh, rotten, uh, fisherboards, trim and all that, so that's included in the, in the, in that compose, or, or the scope of, of this well.
There's a lot of faces on the, so, and I don't have a lot, but just being prepared.
Yeah, yeah. And, and.
Just something.
Yeah, and so, um, age of, or when the site was painted, uh, is one variable, the other is the need for paint because it sits facing the sun, and so we need to paint it well, it moves up in the sun, so again, we'll get, um.
I don't see any roofs on here. Are we pretty confident that our roofs are gonna hold up through these wet, you know, you know, wet season coming on here in real churches, so, are you pretty confident in that?
So far, I am, because, uh, the staff has done a, a great tremendous job, they already, this coming weekend, that's when they're gonna finish cleaning up all the gutters, which is contributes to the problem of, uh, roof leaking. They've gone out there and have done minor repairs, you know, patches here, and they're, along with a contractor that comes and does those repairs as well, certain repairs, um. You, we've all seen the, uh, cost assessment based on the master plan, there's just no way. So, we go about it as, as, uh, with the resources that we have available, you know, as much as we can, the best possible that we can address those issues, but yes.
And there was nothing in there that said that the, uh, roof is about to fail, for example, there was no priority one, or do you, or move. Um, and the more we, uh, the better we maintain it and do some of these proactive moves, the better we should do it.
We'll take it with, uh, adult education areas, because that's the most, most, uh, and, and you want to call, um, the initial assessment to complete adult education, place that, you know, the, so.
Well, that's why we can't afford to let that build up anymore, we're not gonna be proactive, we're not gonna be running behind the eight ball.
Which is exactly what, what I want to update the machine.
I just wanted to make sure, this is a project.
We're adding projects.
We can't, we're behind that one.
Um, any, um, yeah, because we, we thought by putting it all on here, we probably don't need to show the asphalt area of all the schools that was actually in the, the original pattern, and, uh, potentially convince it to, this is our recommendation, we'll come back with quotes and, and projects, but this is, these are the scope of projects that we'll leave them back.
Um, I just wanted to show off that, the C E L C, that was before and after, that's about the, the Silk Road looks.
The, um, gym at, uh, Santa Fe was built with, um, pass-through money. It was a community project between the city and the school district. Um, does the city utilize that building for any functions whatsoever?
Oh, no, I'm not, well, um, what my office received is the city wants to use our campus for, and, uh, and we did use their, um, training, so they use, they have used, um, MHS for the last summer because MHS are coming, so they didn't use that thing, but not specifically.
The reason I asked the question, because the building was originally built as a joint effort between the city and the school district. You see where I'm going?
I, I'm gonna need to use the.
It's, it's like the pool, the pool was.
Yeah.
Money that was used, um, as pass-through money, and so we have joint usages. And since it's joint usages, there may be a, a way to partner with joint repairs.
Mr. Do you remember, is there any M O U agreement, uh, as a?
It's before we were born.
Okay.
I gotta feel that kind of one away, and they built, built one over here, I think.
Well, you, you, the, I mean, the fact remains, it was built with redevelopment money.
Right, right.
So, I mean, there.
What would be the best way to, um, investigate that?
Well, just if, you know, there may be a call, have a listen, see if there is an M O U that exists between, I mean, it's, it's a long time ago. When, when was that building built? It was, uh, late eighties, early nineties?
I wasn't here.
It's been a long time, I, how I know.
Really, even you? We should ask Andy.
It was a joint, I, I just thought it was a joint use agreement that was, allowed that to happen, and it was because of redevelopment funds. You remember, Brian?
Uh, I, I'm thinking back, I don't know that I was here.
Yeah, it, it's probably nineties.
Nineties, okay. We need our condition, can we call, so you say?
No, no, I, I don't know, I don't know that that's the, the, the approach, but if it's a, if it's a joint use, like, like the, um, the pool, then there are some shared expenses that are, are to be expected.
Yeah.
Worthwhile.
Yeah, yeah, it's worth checking, yeah.
Okay, all right, and unless there are any other questions on the facilities aspect, I'd like to move on to the technology.
Give a rip, really quick? I would like to keep this format as an ongoing thing, so we can check it every so often.
Right.
This is actually, we'd like to read out, so we can, so we can kinda see, and it's very obvious that you're focusing on asphalt, H-back, and exterior painting, uh, so it makes it easy to read. The only thing that we can add over time, because I know we don't always have the information, perhaps at the bottom of the boxes, what the last time it was done, so, you know, since we're talking about ongoing maintenance, you know, for the asphalt, for example, uh, if we can put in the dates when we get this done, and we know that we have to do it every five years, it's not gonna be shocking to us, same with painting, roofs, and everything else we have on here.
Connie, just stop for meeting tonight, but if you can get us for Friday, um, how much money do we receive each year for maintenance? What is the dollar amount?
Uh, you mean for the redevelopment agency?
No, no, no.
Oh, I have a deferred maintenance?
That we get, that we would use for maintenance each year. How, what is, how much money do we get to use towards maintenance on buildings each year?
We have to set aside two percent for.
The, um, for the, the, the.
I'm sure we do, I just, we have to do it tonight, I just, get by Friday.
Okay, I will, I will. We have a couple of maintenance, kind of confusing, it's a different, routine assured maintenance, deferred maintenance.
I'm talking about money you can put your hands on, cash, how much cash do we get?
Because that's the cash we intend to use to start the projects.
Two million dollars. We have, yeah, we have to set aside two million dollars this year for them. I will put in that data.
I wanna know how much money we really have, not what we wish we had, how much we feel we have.
Right.
Okay, got it, okay.
Great, yeah?
Great. Just a brief history on, um, how technology has worked over the years, from two thousand to two thousand seven, we put a lot of money into infrastructure, a lot of it's what's out there today. Um, then around two thousand eight, as you all know, we had the market crash, and from two thousand nine to two thousand sixteen, um, we did put some money here and there, but not as much as we did in the previous period. Um, in two thousand sixteen, uh, we upgraded, um, some of our servers, we upgraded, uh, net wireless network equipment, uh, the minimum of what was required to, to support all the devices, and we've grown about four thousand, uh, devices, and we haven't added, uh, any staff, uh, since then.
In fact, we lost two in Tito. We lost two, you know?
A little joke that we lost, uh, one point five to two, uh, losing Tito, but, uh. So, this is our, how our technology department is structured, uh, today, uh, we have an apartment of six, uh, employees, uh, or six positions, um, currently, uh, we have a vacancy, uh, our technology support assistant left about two weeks ago, uh, to move on to bigger and better things at Mount SAC. This is where I envision it, it should be, uh, wanting to, uh, ultimately grow, uh, to eight positions, uh, down the line, um, but, uh, seven in the near future, and that seventh position would be, um, the data support specialist, uh, with the idea of having that person support our, our areas, um, our CAPAD reporting, and pretty much anything that has to do with, uh, uh, data, moving data, rostering, or things like that. And then down the line, wanting to add another, uh, person out in the field, whether it be a technology support specialist or assistant, um, mainly because of the, the growth in the devices that we have, and we also lost two in Tito as well, so, um, but that's why, um, I'm looking, uh, forward to ultimately, hopefully, um, staff the department at a, down the line. Questions to that? So, we do have a lot of aging equipment, um, we have some network equipments that's aging, our mouse servers are starting to be, uh, aged, um, our projectors, bulbs are starting to go out, um, our docking cameras are out of warranty, um, and we have a lot of old PCs that are really starting to show age. Additionally, our, the phones that we use for communications, they're also starting to show age as well. Uh, we also have issues with our, um, data center, um, basically, we have cooling issues, and best practices for data center is usually to have a generator as well, and we don't have a generator, so we can't actually survive a power outage, and we can't actually survive, uh, if our A C goes down. The room has overheated at, uh, multiple times, so we'll have to come in and open the doors and provide ventilation. Um, in trying to identify the urgent needs that we do have, um, our staff computers are the oldest in the district, many of them, uh, were hurt then, they were from two thousand six to two thousand seven, um, we're in the, uh, process of prioritizing which ones to replace, there are about a hundred and seventy of them out there, um, estimating them to be about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, maybe a little bit more or less, um, once we place, we expect those to have a life. Six years. Um, our data center, we're operating now, um, but we do try to keep it together, um, in fact, we actually, uh, keep the doors open over the weekend, just so it doesn't overheat over the weekend, just in case. So, we're wanting to, um, uh, service, replace, or fix, uh, the A C that's in there. And upcoming, we also have, uh, approximately two thousand fifty Chromebooks that will be expiring in about, in twen- summer of twenty twenty-one, um, the cost for this, the district will have to budget approximately seven hundred and thirty K, and that's in today's dollar, not coming inflation, uh, and those have a lifespan of approximately five years. Um, these were originally purchased in two thousand fifteen, and they currently meet our needs, but this is something that I'm foreseeing in the future, that, uh, is a big expenditure that we will have to, uh, bu- budget for. These are basically our urgent needs, uh, our recommendations, and is there any questions that you have?
We said, we need one, to replace or to fix the air conditioning for the data center, but what we have is not actually what a data center should have, if I read your material right, we need to completely change it out, not just repair it.
So, there's a short term, we're recommending a short-term solution that will keep us going for a few years, and that's the thirty-five thousand dollar, uh, that Fernando had mentioned in the facilities, uh, presentation, but in the long term, it will require more like a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars to overhaul the envelope.
If you were going to build a data center today, what would it look like?
Like, if, uh, if I have unlimited funds, and, but being realistic.
No, if you were gonna design one today that you need to meet the needs of what we currently have, what would it look like?
It'd be expensive.
It'd be, what it would look like, um, it would look like ideally, um, having, uh, two air conditionings that work that alternate, so that if one fails, the other one takes over, that's alternating, so that it ages out, um, evenly, and also. And also, uh, an emergency ventilation system in case something goes wrong. It opens up the vents and lets air through. Uh, I would envision if I were to build a data center as well, I would take advantage, advantage of the climate. Because right now, our AC runs about twenty-four seven, but in today's climate, you know, you can open the windows. You can, you can cool the data center with actually air and not have to run compressor. Uh, you save a lot in electrical costs in the long run. Um, but that type of data center, when you put it all together, including permits and everything, um, it usually runs at least three hundred K. Um, I've seen a lot of districts spend well over half a million dollars or something like that.
Who has one around here?
Um, Glendale recently built their data center a few years ago, um, but they also redid their offices, so it's kinda hard to estimate how much they actually spent on the data center, but they spent one point seven billion dollars.
It was a lot of money. I'll, I guarantee you that.
Tustin spent seven hundred K. I remember that, that number.
Who, I'm sorry, who did?
Tustin.
How, how big are they?
They're big. They're about thirty thousand.
So it's, if you divide it by six, you probably have a number that we would be looking at? No? Doesn't, doesn't count on who you're servicing?
No, not the data center.
I mean, it, si- you'll need larger for the, uh, number of servers. But the cost is not in the servers, but in the structure and, um, the per.
Most, most of them have raised floors also, because they get ventilation from below, okay? So it's, to build a good data center, they're expensive. Because we, and don't forget, we also have nothing but brick walls on the outside, okay? Drywall on the inside. It takes a lot, a lot of money to build a good.
Have we lost the ability to do our work because stuff was shut down?
We've had some close calls, let's just say that. We've had some very close calls. I'll just give you one example. Uh, I was about to sleep, and I noticed that the AC went out, and I came in and opened the door. Whatever, I had not checked my phone. I just went to sleep. And I woke up. And we've had some close calls. So we have a system now that would not just, not just send alerts out to just me and our systems analysts, but now we're sending it out to cabinet as well, so that hopefully when an alert's sent out, one of us can be able to, you know, call everybody else to try to make sure that that room stays cool.
So one of the reasons we're recommending, uh, the new, uh, air conditioning system in there and moving vents in the data center is because it will help give us a little more, uh, comfort and stability in that frame.
Is a little more enough, I question.
It is, we will.
Because all, all it's gonna do, the cost to build a decent data center is just gonna keep going up. And our needs aren't gonna change. Our needs are gonna get more and more and more and more. So, ki- I'm just not sure that kicking a can down the road two or three years is, might be penny light pound food share.
Is the data center in the best location? Tito's explaining what got basically a cement cave, and it's creating problems. Do we have other buildings that are, are better suited?
Well, in our school district, it's where they ran the, the fiber, okay? We added a mountain.
Right.
And then, um, we moved it over to, because it got smaller. We had it a mountain, it was huge, okay? We had tons of stuff in it. We moved it to, uh, the district office, because it was cheaper to run the fiber over here, okay? So, everything runs off our fiber, so that's where it's at now. It's not, I think with these adjustments, it's, it'll, it'll be fine. All it is, is the air conditioner is dead old. The one in the building itself is from the beginning, back in nine, when we started technology. The one up on the roof has been replaced once. Yeah, so if they replace one of them again, then we're back to normal. Because when one of them fails, the other one takes on. That small one inside the room was our original air conditioner. They kept it whole for years. Okay, and we had more equipment at the motel, phone system and all kinds of stuff. Most of that stuff is out now, we just have, we don't have as much equipment as we used to have.
So we don't need a brand new seven hundred thousand dollar system. It could just be, we need to fix our air conditioner.
Well, I think the new, the air conditioner up on top is never worked well, okay? We've had, when I was here, we had Wagner every other month come and fix it. And then the little one is from the beginning, so, okay? When we started technology, that air conditioner's been, that one definitely needs to be changed.
I'm sorry, how much again for the, the two new air conditioner?
Uh, the, if we, just to replace them, going off of, uh, Fernando's estimate of about thirty-five.
Thirty-five thousand for both air conditioners, yeah.
Is that correct?
Versus.
It also includes, uh, ventilation system that will draw air from the outside, that will sense all sorts of temperature, freezing temperature to that one. It'll get on, um.
But to address Ed's concern, is that a system that can last indefinitely? Or are you saying that this is only gonna last for three more years? Or, or something of that nature?
I think it could last a long time, because if, if the maintenance is done on the air conditioner, okay? If they do the maintenance on the air cond- because we've never changed that one on the floor. That one on the wall is from the beginning.
Uh, okay, do this for me. Data center shuts down, what happens?
All internet connectivity to the school sites are, 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 are down.
Once it, once it heats up, all the equipment shuts down.
You won't be able to do, uh, physical services, um, because it all goes through there. Our escape system, our financial system is also at the data center as well.
Okay. Phones?
Phones go, go to the data center as well. So the, if the data center goes down, our phone system will not work, except for at the school sites, uh, one phone call at a time, nine-one-one phone call.
This, and one at a time?
One at a time.
So if multiple people tried to access nine-one-one for different reasons from different school sites, we would hit a logjam?
It would give you busy.
No, because each one has an individual outside line, okay?
Yeah, each school has one ana- analog line, because there's no analog line that goes into the phone system at the same site.
So three people on campus picked up the phone to call, m- one gets through.
The first one, correct. The other, the others.
So how much does it cost to put a backup generator in? Because you're just explaining to me, we have catastrophic failure of our entire system if this thing is lost. So how do you prevent that from happening? It's not an air conditioner. An air conditioner will keep it up and going. We need to protect against catastrophic failure. So how much does it cost to put a, the generator in that keeps it powered up, so that we are safe? Which is the number one priority here, is keeping everybody safe.
But if we need the backup generator, would there be ener- energy that actually goes to the system to heat it up? Would it shut down automatically?
I believe the power turns off.
The, the generator, when, when the power shuts off, the generator cranks up, okay? Now, somebody has to make sure that it has diesel, check the oil.
Yeah, they usually run a natural gas too.
Uh, yeah, but they usually, once it's set up, once that room becomes dark, that they should pop right up, okay?
When we're talking about catastrophic failure, things are, are backed up physically somewhere, right? Our data is physically. We have a redundant system offsite for our, for our data, right?
So redundant and backup are two different things. We have a backup, we have a backup copy, but doesn't mean that, um, if our data center goes down, all of a sudden, the next day, we can bring things up and running. We have to use that backup copy to reconstruct everything, to bring things back up and running.
But we have a backup copy.
We have a backup at Canyon Oaks, which somewhere down the line, I'm gonna probably wanna propose we locate it somewhere else, but we do have a backup that goes to Canyon Oaks.
And how often is our data backed up? Meaning that if it shut down today, how far backwards are you going to restore it?
I haven't looked at the statistics recently, but maybe Alan can answer that.
David.
It's a daily, about daily.
And is that a manual process?
Automatic.
Automatic.
In addition to the cost of the air conditioning, I like to see the cost of supplying a backup generator. Uh, I think they should be part and parcel of the same plan. I, I think you may be whistling past a graveyard by not looking at that.
Yeah, what actually drives up the cost is, there's a bunch of little things that comes up together, because once you add the AC, the generator, when you talk about building a proper data center, it's using fireproof walls, it's also using dry suppression system, because you don't want wet sprinklers on your IT equipment. That's what drives the cost, cost up. Um, and then all the permitting, um, AQMD permits that you put out for the generator as well, those have to be put out.
It, it is what it is. I mean, we're talking about our, th- this is how we operate. And if we're brought to a standstill, because, a- and it's very likely that you could have multiple days of high temperature, that it just cannot cool. And you're now shut down. Now luckily, hopefully, we'll be out of school when that happens. But this, this is a three hundred and sixty-five day a year operation. It, it doesn't limit itself to days of education only. We just hope it doesn't happen when the kids are in class. But if they are, we need a way to make sure that we're functioning. I mean, we only have a hundred and eighty-one days of education. We can't afford to have days that you can't quit a school, because we can't access a computer. That doesn't make sense.
Well, I mean, this is, this is the con part of going so heavy in technology, right? So if there is a point in time in which we have a problem at this building, and tree falls down, whatever the reason is, and Edison says they've determined you can't run power to this building for a week. What does that do for all the schools in general? I mean, I mean, that would be.
That's fantastic.
Us being up doesn't help the schools out there if they're down, okay? It just helps the people here, okay? Because they will, they will continue to get internet, but if, let's say Plymouth is down, well Plymouth's not gonna get internet, because it's not gonna do. I mean, we're gonna send it, but it's not gonna receive, okay?
You, you know what would be helpful? Um, one, I, I think having a backup contingency plan is always good to know. I think, to me, that, to me, that's a given. But I think it would be helpful for me to understand the critical nature of this particular room, and what happens. What does it control? What would cause it to go bad? And what are the consequences of it going bad? And how long does it take to get back to normal? Because this is, uh, I mean, we're asking, I think, probably some general questions, because we don't know.
And, and all of that varies, okay? Like, I remember when, um, GTE, uh, the phone company, GTE, tore out some cable, okay? And they happened to tear up our cable, okay? So we were down for a week, okay? Because then they realized, oh my God, you tore out your cable, and so then they had to come, come and tell us that they tore up the cable, and then they had to fix it, okay? So it took them a week to get everything done, so we could have phones and internet.
Yeah, I'm, I'm down for when somebody causes a disaster on us. What I'm not down for is that we didn't prepare for the disaster, and it's on us. And that's the one that I want to try to avoid. So, I, I mean, you, you best lay plans. But if we know, I mean, I, I, this is the first I've ever heard of a backup generator being, I, I am not.
We, we talked about it. I, I think Jason brought it to you guys back then, yeah.
And, and we talked.
I know for certain, there's two, two fifths of the people sitting here never heard that, because he's been gone a long time. And.
He's been here a few years.
We've been here a year.
Oh, yeah, but I, I know that he brought it to the board, because I have helped him write it up.
We've talked about it before. I guess my question to you, Charles, is you didn't put a generator in here. It's, why didn't, why didn't you? I mean, you, you know our system much better than, because on this side of the table. So why didn't you suggest that one of our personal needs is a, is a backup generator?
A short term and long, long term plan, tha- that's why. Because the, the urgent need right now is really cooling. Um, the long term plan would ultimately be to hopefully want a generator. And, um, it's just one of those things where, you know, that's why his number's thirty-five K, my number's one, twenty-five K, because we are looking into the possibility of what it would take to install a generator as well. We're going through the process as well to figure out, um, sizing. Do we want the generator to just power the data center? The data center and AC, or the whole building? And what the difference in cost would be on that as well.
What I'd like to see is, I, I see that you have all of the numbers for the, uh, uh, budget numbers for all of the different, um, needs. I'd like a bottom line number. Uh, anytime I don't have to do math, that would be greatly appreciated.
So these numbers, um, are firm, which is why we've not added them up. One of the, the things that we say is, you know, we need to replace a hundred and seventy of our old PCs. Well, that's a number we have, but we're not sure if all of those are actually being used.
Well, but.
I need to be, so we, we need to make sure of the location and purpose of each of those computers.
But there are numbers here. So if you have these numbers here, and, and ballparked, understood, if you've got numbers here, I'd like them total.
Okay.
Because you've got, you know, we need, uh, the PCs, a hundred and fifty. We need, um, you know, a hundred and twenty-five thousand. Chromebooks, seven hundred and thirty thousand. So I understand that they're ballparked, but if you've put numbers down, under urgent need and recommendation, I'd like a, a total. Of what, what we're, what we're looking at or about.
You know, I, I'm looking at this list much like Fernando's list, right? We should be looking, how to keep this as an ongoing deal versus every single year having this discussion, saying, I need a million dollars, and it's urgent. We should, we know, you're giving us lifespans of these different, these different ideas. We understand that things are gonna change on an ongoing basis, based on technology, based on all kinds of things, right? But I look at this, I'm doing what Celine's doing. I'm going line item by line, I'm like, okay, well, that's equating a hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year, that's a hundred thousand dollars a year. Well, wait a minute, we're all, we're getting all of a sudden up to some huge numbers, very close to a million dollars, if not over a million dollars. And if we're making a commitment to technology to be the backbone of our schools, we better have the budget for it and be planning for it on a regular basis, so we don't have a school who gets shut down or has a problem because they're at the end of the list and we ran out of money. I mean, thi- this is, I mean, this to me is the key of budget. We have to know, I have to know, how much money does it take, based on your best guess, to run this for a year? And, and I'm not, I'm not there.
I think that includes staff also, because you're, you're saying currently we're understaffed at six, you're projecting eight, you know, one, and, you know, prioritize with the urgency, but, you know, best case scenario or worst case scenario, I, I think the staff budget needs to be included in that, because I think that's around six hundred.
And that's our technology plan, yeah? And if it's updated, when, till the next time the technology plan gets updated.
Well, the technology plan, um, most school districts don't do technology plans anymore, quite honestly, it's because a lot of, most of them did that because of compliance, because they go require a technology plan. So I believe the last one we did was probably two thousand twelve, two thousand thirteen.
Well, you've done one since you've been here, haven't you?
Yeah, what you've done is provided an outline of what we are having, what we just do. You've done that for.
Oh, that type of tech, oh yeah. So that technology plan I put together, there was a spreadsheet.
Put together a technology plan, that's what I'm talking about. I'm not talking about something else.
Okay.
I'm just talking about having a plan that says, oh, Chromebooks last about six years, so we're gonna replace one-third of our, one-sixth of our Chromebooks every year. Or, no, we're gonna replace all of our iPads this year, and we're gonna place half of our. I mean, there's gotta be some, some plan that says how we're gonna keep these current. The devices, all the switches, all the, if we don't have that kind of plan, then what we're gonna do is we're gonna get down to the end of the life, and we're, oh my, we need seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars to replace these. They probably won't last another year.
And a lot of this, we know. We know when our licenses expire, right? We got lucky this time around that they extended it for a year, but had they not extended it, there would have been a handout saying, we need, how much money? How much money do we need to redo all of our licenses?
Uh, for the Chromebooks, you need seven hundred and thirty K.
Seven hundred and thirty thousand dollars. There would have been a handout saying, I need a hundred, seven hundred and thirty thousand dollars now, or none of our things update. That's a huge chunk of change. That's, this isn't a surprise. We know, we know for a fact, we know from day one, that that day is gonna come. And we haven't budgeted for it. At least the way that I budget, that most of us budget. I know if I've got five years, I'm setting one-fifth aside every single year in preparation for that day. I know if I've got five years, I'm setting one-fifth aside every single year in preparation for that day.
And and we all know that technology is expensive because we own technology and we take it home and we realize like three years from now I'm gonna buy another Dell. Oh yeah, okay? Next year I'm gonna buy another iPad, you know, blah, blah, blah. So we all know this stuff, it's just a matter of saying, okay, technology has been underfunded for a thousand years since I did it. And it never gets funded correctly.
I I just wanna. It confirms our thought.
But you save three days and.
Hey, I'm hanging with the dinosaurs, trust me.
Well, I I guess, I I wanna make sure that you, that staff is not waiting till they have absolutely firm numbers before they put it down on paper. I I don't wanna hear, well, we, there's a hundred-and-seventy, but we're really not sure what that number is gonna be. No, we know, at worst-case scenario, it's a hundred-and-seventy. So why are we not budgeting for a hundred-and-seventy? If we save some money down the road, like you did with the firewall and you say, you know what? We're better off, as technology has changed, we don't need to do it for ten years, we can do it for five years or three years or whatever. That's fantastic. But I would rather have a surplus of funds because we're never gonna have, uh, a day in which we don't have additional expenses versus having this panic day, this emergency meeting of, you guys need to come in and sign this because we need to check for seven-hundred-and-thirty thousand dollars or you're not gonna be able to do any testing in the district.
I know, I keep doing that.
So, let let me just get down here from my bottom line. Charles, this says urgent needs and recommendations, right? So, does that mean your recommendation is that we spend a million dollars next year for these three items you've got here? The the AC, or the hundred-and-seventy of the PCs, a hundred-and-twenty-five thousand for the, um, data center and seven-hundred-and-thirty thousand for the, uh, Chromebooks. Is that, is your recommendation that we spend that is approximately a million dollar? That's what we need to spend in the next year or two?
Correct, for the most urgent items, correct.
Wait, 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 I wanna clarify something.
Yeah.
I wanna clarify.
That's just the most urgent, what about the rest of them? I mean.
That, our, our recommendation is to replace the staff computers because that does need to happen and we're gonna work with Connie to budget that. And then, of course.
So that's another item that does not have a cost associated?
That's the hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars.
Okay.
Yeah. So the, um, hundred-and-twenty-five thousand is actually, um, thirty-five thousand from the facilities at cooling system. We're not, we're, the hundred-and-twenty-five thousand is down the road. We'd like to look at generators and things. But right now, we're looking at spending the thirty-five thousand and that's, uh, the number that Fernando managed to.
That's the, what's the thirty-five?
The thirty-five is the.
Replace the air conditioner.
Air conditioner.
Replace one or replace two?
Is that both air conditioners?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
Oh, no, wait, I think it might just be one because the other one is still fine, yeah.
What is it?
So there's two. There's the rooftop, any will be replaced with a budget. And then we have the wall mount, usually.
So you're replacing both of them? Good choices.
So that would replace both of them?
Both.
And the type of air conditioning isn't gonna change? Not gonna be the same old thing that we've got now, which is not the right kind for a data center?
It'll be newer.
It's not originally designed for a data center. But it would keep it cool.
Yes.
To keep it running.
Currently, it, we have a two-and-a-half ton unit. It would want a three, two, three ton unit.
And the thirty-five would do that.
Does that fulfill the data center recommendation? Is that the kind that we should have for a data center?
Just to stop gas.
It's just a stop.
For our data center, yes. For a professional data center, probably not.
Too large of a plan.
Well, of course, well, I wanted, I wanted to ask you.
We took a room in there, made a data center.
You mentioned switches, and I can see switches in here.
Because we, we did the, the presentation to identify the most urgent need.
So that's not an urgent?
And when we talked about it, that was at the very bottom. So right now, we're just bringing the most urgent needs.
Okay, so does that fit within our estimated budget for the next two years?
The switches, I'm looking hopefully maybe in the next two years, not in the, like, towards the end of the next two years.
So these costs are this year?
This year and next year.
Two years.
The, yes, not the switches, these.
Those items are in, are they in? Do they fit in the money we think we're gonna get or is this an additional need?
The Chromebooks will likely come through SNC because that's the source of funding. And so that's a yes to seven-hundred.
As long as we get our SNC that we expect.
The hundred-and-fifty thousand is new.
How does the E-rate fit in with all of that? Because that's still pending, right?
That, that's correct. So E-rate, um, is going through some rule changes this year. And many districts don't know what to do currently. They don't know whether or not to bid or not bid. Uh, there are three scenarios being talked about. And, uh, two scenarios give us literally peanuts. Um, so there's a possibility that we may not have any E-rate, at least for switches and wireless and things like that, to spend, uh, this upcoming year.
For one year or for six years?
Uh, for the two scenarios, it would be for one year, if I remember correctly.
And then after that, then we would have.
Depends on which.
E-rate for maybe six years, or that's the way it's.
Maybe six, yeah, depending on what the rule changes.
So, and we don't know when we're gonna find out about the E-rate changes?
No, not currently.
Can, can you refresh the board's memory for the people who don't understand how much E-rate generates? This is the, say, five years ago, how much did E-rate generate?
E-rate generates, uh, basically one-hundred-and-fifty, one-hundred-and-fifty dollars per student. And about five years ago, they said we're gonna be about one-hundred-and-fifty, uh, one-hundred-and-fifty dollars per student over the course of five years. And then we're gonna reevaluate the, the program and see if we have to make an adjustment. Well, now, that was in two thousand and fourteen, it's two thousand and nineteen now, and they haven't released new rules. So districts are kind of in flux that need equipment. Uh, for us, we can get by with our current switches for right now. Um, if it's unfavorable to us, we just won't, won't bid.
So E-rate would only apply to the switches, it couldn't apply to any of, um, this stuff here in this box?
Um, what E-rate pays for in general, um, E-rate is intended for connectivity. So that usually includes firewall, uh, switches, uh, wireless access points, our internet lines, but it does not include, uh, end devices. It doesn't necessarily include things like a data center because it's not providing the connectivity, although it does support the connectivity.
Because it comes from FCC. So that is the, that's the connectivity, that's not the, yeah, that's not the end product.
Correct, yeah, E-rate comes from basically a tax that you pay on your, your phone bill from FCC.
So if I multiply that out, right, that was about seven-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars over a five-year period?
Correct.
Something.
Yeah, and our, yeah, and our wireless system is about seven-seventy, a little bit under that.
That was our major, that was our major funding source for these items, for, for the beginning of time.
Right.
So.
Then that was the hook that gets you in to take them.
You know?
Yeah, some of these devices we purchased.
Absolutely, they were. I mean, every time our phone system would go down, I'd do, well, we gotta wait till next year's E-rates because we have no money. So, you you know, again, these are the things that are concerning me on our budgeting. Uh, all of these mysteries, I mean, nobody's fault, we don't know what the answer is, but they're big numbers. They're big numbers. And I don't wanna get caught short.
So back to the plan that you did prepare, when are you gonna update that?
Um, it's fairly updated, uh, it basically.
It's still pretty good?
It's still pretty good. It it does show, but what happened at the last study session is, um, we didn't necessarily identify needs and wants because it was a, a big number. It annualized to be about, if I remember correctly, seven-hundred-and-fifty K per year when you include everything. And that takes into consideration things like our, our cabling, right? If cabling has a thirty-year lifespan, and let's say three million dollars, when that time comes, we should be saving a hundred K per year for it. Um, it turns out to be about seven-hundred-and-fifty K, give or take.
We're gonna recognize the cost and then we either, we either spend the money or at some point in time, we're gonna have to reduce our technology costs. So, so what's the bottom line of this presentation?
Uh, we are gonna move forward with the request of the, the staff members, that's our first, uh, project and, uh, start working through the Chromebook refresh cycle.
Oh, and also gonna replace the air conditioner?
I have to replace the air conditioner. Yes, yes.
So those two will be in the budget and then we'll see where we end up to put the find out if Chromebooks are a little bit.
And Kathy, when we say in the budget, we're talking about general fund in the budget?
Yeah. Um.
Not the Chromebooks.
Not the Chromebooks and, um, and I'm hoping that the facility, the thirty-five thousand, maybe, uh, can.
Yeah, we're thinking it's, but the one-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars need to add, add into the budget. Yeah, one-hundred-and-fifty, need to add to the, yeah, for general fund.
So, so just so I'm clear, that's the one that takes, uh, it's fiscal year twenty-twenty-one. It's not nineteen-twenty.
What is your plan, plan to replace the site now or you can do next year? If you, um, depend on what is the plan, I only spread it from the different years. The one-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars, the, um, replace the old PC. Yeah, so, so, um, if I understand, you have your plan, so with my multi-year projection, I need to add on, is that correct?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, that's why I'm asking, is it, is this something that? I mean, I've seen the ones that we're trying to replace, they're arcane, to say the least. That is, that is a kind way of describing it. So are we looking at starting it, potentially having some new equipment for these teachers now? Or is it gonna be in fiscal year twenty-twenty-one instead of nineteen-twenty? What are we looking at?
In my mind, I'm thinking it'd be a summer project. So that's kind of, I'm kind of on the fence with that one because I'm thinking, okay, because it might actually be this year, we're trying to get it in May, start in June. Or potentially, if it has to be next year, we could do it, it just takes a lot of planning to try to figure out how to rush the, just the setup because that means we leave it.
I guess I'm not asking the rush. What I'm asking is, is it going to be this year? Or is it gonna be for fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two, I mean, twenty-twenty-one? Or are we looking at doing nineteen-twenty?
When are you gonna put the order in?
Yeah.
I don't remember if somebody tells me when you got the money.
That's what I'm, I'm, honestly, that's what I'm thinking. When someone tells me I got the money, I'm, I'm, I'm planning to put the order in. If someone told me today, um, I wouldn't put the order in today because we need to verify those one-hundred-and-seventy machines. I'm thinking spring break, if I had the money, I could possibly do quite a bit during spring break.
So is the money in this year's budget to do that?
You're, you're reading my mind, Ed, this is.
That's the question.
That is, that's why I'm asking, is it fiscal year nineteen-twenty or fiscal year twenty-twenty-one?
So in Friday's update, could we, um, could we get a look at what that might be for that?
I would like to get the tools in the hands of the people that were asking to do the job as soon as possible.
Okay.
Thank you. Can you have that by Friday?
Sure.
All right then, we, uh, board need anything else? All right then, we will adjourn our Board of Education's study session and convene the open session and call for any comments for items on the closed session. Anybody coming? Fair enough, we're gonna wrap the closed session after about five minutes.
So why don't you head up to the gym?
Kathy, this is a challenge.
What does she think?
No.
Anybody there? Um, good, glad to hear. In the conference room, we're sticking. Not waiting.
That, that was clear, with his expectations. Wants to give us a chance to resolve.
So based on how this is now. I want you to look at. This is an opportunity.
This is one good story, the next.